All right. Good evening. It's five thirty. So a call to order the Tipton Community School Corporation. The public work session. I think first on the agenda is Mr. Jaworski with some twenty twenty-four, twenty-five student achievement data. So.
Thank you very much.
More is yours.
If you know me, you know, this is one of my favorite favorite days of the year. I get to talk a little bit about the data that we've gathered over the last school year. So all this information has been released by the DOE. And some of this is obviously stuff that we've collected over the course of the previous school year. All of this is aligned to our strategic plan. We'll touch on that a little bit, but this is our, we'll start with our twenty-four, twenty-five attendance report. So again, following our strategic plan, we set a goal, and this is, in my opinion, a very lofty goal, but something I think is still somewhat attainable, is eighty percent of our students would be in attendance at least ninety-four percent of the year by the end of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. I know that when you put a couple of percentages together, it gets a little confusing what we're saying. So let me simplify by saying four out of five kids will miss ten or less stays throughout the school year, right? That's essentially what this goal is aiming towards. So things that we measured, we measured five plus absence counts, ten plus absence counts, students at ninety-four percent attendance rate, chronic absenteeism. We did some regional state comparisons with our daily attendance data. We did Eric's favorite, which is the monthly and daily attendance rates. I do have that. I don't have in the presentation. I thought those may be a little more in the weeds than we needed to go. So if you're curious, I'd be more than happy to share that. We'll see if the Taco Tuesdays are working out. So starting off, this is again directly aligned to our goal, ninety-four percent attendance rate. What you see in the gray bars is was our attendance rate from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, and the blue bars are from our twenty-four, twenty-five school year, so just this past year. So it's broken down by building and then overall by the district. We saw incredible gains. I know it. It, yes, there's definitely a gap between there, between what we did in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then twenty-four, twenty-five, but I cannot emphasize enough how huge of a jump that is in just a single year, seeing almost seven percent in the, in the elementary, and then seeing over eight percent in the middle school. That is huge. Now, again, that is obviously a testament when you don't have major flues going through your buildings, but at the same time, that's more than just a couple of weeks worth of data. That is the effort that our students have put in to make sure they get to school, their families making sure they get to school. And then our teachers create engaging lessons and administrators working with our families to make sure that when students are missed, they know that families recognize, hey, we know your kid's missing, we care your kid's missing. How do we work together to make sure we get you into school? So seeing that growth data there is incredible. As a district, we're up almost five percent. And if we maintain that rate, we will hit that lofty goal of eighty percent by the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So very positive, very optimistic for our first year's data towards our strategic plan. Chronic absenteeism, as you might imagine, if our attendance rates are going up, chronic absenteeism is going down across the board. With the exception of our high school, again, that's one that we face challenges again with kids who are missing more and more days. Again, I like to take this more from a holistic view as opposed to just a year to year. So while this data is great from just a year-to-year perspective, understand that things like what we see in the high school, we see a slight increase in that chronic absenteeism. Again, that's where kids are missing ten, ten percent or more of the school year. So something that comes up on occasion, but again, as a district, we're down almost two whole percent from that. And again, when you look at regionally, we're near the top, number two in the region with all these different school districts, only trailing behind Northwestern by about half a percent. But really strong overall, I would say, and again, continuing to grow. That's the important part here. So again, my big key takeaway is up five percent from the previous year. That's actually the second time we've done that. Chronic absenteeism is down nearly two percent. And then again, our number two in the daily attendance rate. When I would talk about that daily attendance rate, I should have mentioned this. This is the percentage of students of your entire student body that are in school on any given day. So any given day, we have ninety-five percent of our students in school. That means roughly four kids per grade level are absent on any given day. Again, that is phenomenal and obviously top two in our region here. Any questions related to attendance?
I have one. When you are showing these numbers, are those also calculated, like figuring in the kids who have like chronic illnesses or like certificates of incapacity? I don't know if that's still a thing or not. Are those kids reflected in these numbers too?
Yes. So it, it absences an absence. We talked about that as an admin team, so it gets counted against us one way or another. So yes, those do count. So again, for example, if you have a rash of those in a particular building, that's going to reflect in those chronic absentee.
Who are going to miss consistently for medical reasons.
Correct.
Otherwise, and that can't be controlled.
Yeah, it's number of absences. The only times that those wouldn't count as absences are if they're under exempt, which are things the state, by state code, they outline, like now it's a, being a part of the state fair. I think band day is now a part of that as well, although that doesn't impact us. Your election, working the election polls, things like that. So.
And I have our number one absent day is coming up very shortly.
Yeah, Wednesday?
Thursday?
Thursday? Okay, I'll double check that. I, I haven't looked in a while.
Are we doing anything, right? It's the first day of the Pork Fest with all the.
Oh, that one. Yes, sorry. I thought you were talking about this single day of the week. Yeah, the Pork Festival. That's, that's one we will keep a close eye on again. We'll see what.
I don't know what we can do about it, right?
I'm not moving the Pork Festival. That's what you're suggesting. Don't, don't ask me to do that.
Tammy's not aware of the stat. That's our number one.
It was one of our, yeah, one of our greatest absenteeism days is Pork Festival, Thursday, that Thursday.
They do, like the Clean Pageant does interviews that day, like throughout the day, like my daughter.
You gotta get ready.
Gotta get ready for it. I hear it.
Yeah.
So I don't know where the others are spaced, but.
Well, I'll keep an eye on it for our report back next month. Well, actually, it will be the October then, because it won't be until after our meeting, right?
Yeah.
Anyways, next, we're looking at ILEARN. Again, how this relates to our strategic plan, our elementary, again, by the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, end of that year, our math goals in the elementary seventy percent proficiency. In ELA, it's fifty-five percent is our goal. And in the middle school, keep it simple, fifty-five percent is our goal in both math and ELA. So take a look at that, things that we measured. And again, I've got a lot more of this data. Trust me, we could spend all night looking at this, but I wanted to make sure I hit on the highlights. So we're looking at historical comparisons. I've got cohort comparisons, so watching how a individual group of students, how their performance tracked over the last three, four, or five years of taking ILEARN. We have our regional state comparisons. And again, this covers ELA and math in grades three through eight, science for grades four and six, social studies is offered in grade seven, or sorry, grade five. And then we also have high school biology as an ILEARN assessment as well. So we'll take a look at each of those different categories. When we're looking at it from elementary perspective, again, our goal is fifty-five percent proficiency. We came in at forty point seven percent proficiency. You can see kind of our historical passing rates as an elementary, grades three through five there. Again, below where our goal is for sure, but I believe we are slightly above state average as an elementary there. I think the state average fell around forty percent as well, but again, what we're seeing there is we had a trend down over the last few years, and then this past year, we have a tick up. Again, like I said before, and I'm going to say this throughout this presentation, I try not to overreact to individual data points. It's really more of where that trend is going. So while this is a good start, we still have a lot of work ahead of us to make sure that we're seeing growth in that ELA for elementary. When we look at middle school ELA, kind of the same story, right? We had a big uptick two years ago, and this past year, we saw a downturn again. So again, following that trend, how are we doing the last few years? We're kind of in that mid thirties range. And so what we're working on as a, as a middle school is we're trying to figure out what are the different tools we need to make sure we are breaking that trend. How are we, what are we doing to address those concerns? And again, one of the things I know we've started implementing towards the middle of the year, end of last year, is our intervention periods for our middle school where we intentionally target students based off of their assessments in school, and then we we provide the intervention periods during our, what's it called again, beginning?
Home room.
Acceleration, sorry, my, my mistake. John, John makes a good point. It is an acceleration period. Again, what's great about this year that will help with some of this is, and I say this, we are going to have the ILEARN through year assessment this year. That is a requirement that's placed on us by the state. The through year assessment means that there are three checkpoints that schools in grades for grades three through eight, students will be taking a short computer adaptive ILEARN test in the fall, in the winter, in the spring, and then there will be a summative ILEARN assessment. That's a little bit shorter than what's been in the past, given in late April, early May. Now, again, I know everybody cringes when you hear more testing. To counteract that, we have actually taken away the eye-ready testing that we were having students do as a form of formative assessment that we've done the last few years. So again, yes, it's more testing, but we've taken some away. So it's really the same amount of testing, the idea being these checkpoints will kind of give us some insight on how our students are doing as we go throughout the year and kind of projection of how the students will do when they get to the summative ILEARN. The summative ILEARN is the one that counts. It's the one that gets reported out. The formative assessments, those checkpoints, those get reported to the school, we'll communicate those to families, but that doesn't go on any kind of accountability grade that the state is now considering moving forward. So sorry, a little tangent on that one, but want to kind of give you some perspective. When we look at cohorts, again, what we see with our incoming eighth graders, our current eighth graders now, as third graders, they're passing at forty-seven percent rate, forty-nine and a half percent rate, well above the state average in third and fourth grade. And then we saw a couple consecutive years of downward progression in fifth grade, sixth grade, to where we're kind of hovering around that state average now as they're in seventh grade. Again, that's something that we've seen consistently here in Tipton over the last few years, and something that we're taking a really close look at. I know our fifth grade team is working really intently on what type of interventions we're going to provide for ELA. We'll talk a little bit about how those interventions have supported math here when we take a look at the math data. I'm very confident that will happen. We've already addressed kind of what's going to happen with our middle school ELA work as well. Same thing, just another look, another cohort. This was our incoming freshman now. We're around state average in fourth grade. We saw a dip into the fifth grade, and then they've been kind of consistently in that mid to low thirty percent passing rate. Again, below state average, and that's something that we need to find a way to buck that trend. Kind of integrating a bit of the attendance discussion that we had a little bit ago with the achievement discussion. So the graph on the left, the way I've kind of simplified the explanation on this, left side is ninety-four percent attendance rate or better. I call that the quote-unquote good attendance. You're missing ten or less school days throughout the year. On the right, you're missing more than ten school days throughout the year. So when you are attending school related to ELA, you have a better chance of passing your ILEARN assessment than you do when you're missing more and more school. In fact, almost half the students who are below, or missed more than ten days are below proficiency. So again, that's kind of what the purpose of this graph is, is to kind of really outline why attendance is so important. When you're missing school, you have a greater chance of not passing these assessments. When you look at math, again, this is our historical math proficiency. This is as a district. We've seen a positive trend up here over several years, not just a one or two year thing. This is multiple years for seeing growth. And specifically, when we look at math in the elementary, that's fantastic. Again, we are at sixty point six percent proficiency. I don't know why that goal says fifty-eight percent. The goal there should be fifty-five percent. So that is, again, outstanding. We're doing a great job in math in our elementary. Now, the reason I want to point out intervention and acceleration periods recently, our elementary did just that with our multi-tiered systems of support with our RTI process where we are intentionally targeting students based off of classroom data. We're identifying who's struggling. We're giving them extra supports, extra learning opportunities, and we are seeing, we saw dramatic growth over six percent, or exactly six percent over this past year, which has been phenomenal. Again, really excited about that. Excited about the work that our elementary is doing there. Again, when we're looking at cohorts, this is our incoming fifth grade cohort in math, well above state average. Two years ago, last year, even greater above state average. State average is seeing a decline in math scores. Our incoming fifth graders saw an increase in scores. That is incredible work by both our third and fourth grade teams and really all of our teachers working together to make sure those students are set up for success. When we're looking at our incoming seventh graders, our current seventh graders, we were above state average as third grade. We were at a state average in fourth grade, and we've kind of trickled down a little bit below state average as they entered sixth grade last year. Again, that's something where we're seeing some, some challenges in our, our middle school math in ELA. We're taking a close look at exactly what type of interventions, what type of acceleration we're doing for those kids. We have a plan, and now it's a matter of making sure we implement that and execute it appropriately and see what those results are. Again, it's going to be a one year at a time type of business with this particular cohort. Same deal with our incoming freshmen as well. Kind of that same drop from fifth grade to sixth grade. We see that drop across the state. As you see, there is that three percent drop in the state. We saw an eighteen percent drop in that particular cohort. That's a little bit more alarming when you see that kind of drop. Again, that forces us to take a look at our systems and say, what are we doing that's failing our kids? And what do we need to do to correct that boat? And I feel like we have a strong team in place that's going to start seeing that curve go back up. Again, just another relation. I think that what I want to take away from this particular graph, since I've already kind of beaten this, beaten this horse, is our attendance rate, when you're attending school, it has a more dramatic impact on math data than it does on ELA. On ELA, yes, it definitely did affect it still. But here, forty-five percent passing rate for kids who had quote-unquote good attendance, and just thirty percent for kids who had more than ten days absence. So math is where it really hits as far as attendance goes, more dramatically than ELA. They both matter, but that math one is, to me, quite more dramatic. Again, we're looking at it from a regional perspective. We're talking about social studies now. Again, social studies only administered to fifth grade students. We kind of fall in the middle of the pack. Now, that's atypical for what we typically see in our elementary. In just as recent as a couple of years ago, we were head and shoulders above everybody on this list. Again, it's a year-to-year thing, different groups, different cohorts is going to happen. You're going to get different results, but I would like to point out that we are still above that state average. So positive there. How do we continue to build and grow on that? Because we know what we're capable of. It's now a matter of how do we make sure we execute and get those results. From a historical perspective, looking at elementary science now. Again, like I said, year to year, it's going to bounce around because it's not like science is measured year to year. It's a different cohort every single year. So you're going to see different trends here. But I will say is that it's positive to see the overall trend from twenty-twenty all the way to this past year. We're seeing that positive growth. And what's even more encouraging is when we look at our middle school science, that is a pretty linear growth there from thirty-four percent back in twenty-twenty, north of fifty-two percent now. And one thing that we can certainly hang our hat on for a middle school is our science scores are top in the region by, by, by a healthy margin there. Again, it's a year-to-year thing. This is combined both fourth and sixth grade science results. Really excited, really proud of the work that our team has done. We know we've just recently done a resource adoption, and our teachers are using that to the full extent. And again, I think we have a really strong team, and I think that, that shows in the work in the, in the data we have here. Finally, this is my, this is my favorite graph because it's so dramatic. I know my first three years here, first couple of years here, we saw our high school biology scores were on fifteen, fourteen, as low as thirteen percent passing. And that was entirely unacceptable. We knew we had to make a change. And so we made a few changes. We got, we, we, we actually have Ashley Roberts is our new, newish, I should say, because it's now her third year in high school biology. And every year she's been here, we have seen growth, and we have seen incredible growth. I, for whatever reason, the state doesn't have the, like, state average for our biology scores, but I can guarantee you that this is well above state average at this point. Again, from where we're at to where we are now, seeing that continue to grow by leaps and bounds, and I am so proud and so ecstatic for our high school students and our teachers. Again, that's a tribute to not just Ashley, it's a tribute to our entire high school science scene, it's a tribute to our middle school and elementary teachers who are preparing students for that biology test through proper studying habits and through, again, that basic science knowledge.
Scott.
Oh, there is to say that, which I did have. Yes.
I want to say, for you and Dr. Glaze, when, when we, when Rob and I, our class joined the board, and we saw that stat was.
Yeah, it was.
Horrifying. But you guys, I mean, from a leadership standpoint, you knew what needed to be done.
Yeah.
And you made the change in the classroom for the betterment of the kids, and it, it is dramatic. So kudos to the teacher and teachers, but kudos to you guys for saying that's not acceptable.
Right. I appreciate that. And like I said, it's really is a dedication of, it's attributed to the dedication and hard work of the people putting that in. I, I, like I said, that's something that you're proud of. That's something I want to shout from the mountaintop. I, I did misspeak. We did have the state average. That is, like I said, above that state average by over six percent. So again, we went from real low to six percent above state average, and I anticipate that to continue growing based off of what we're seeing. It's absolutely phenomenal and really proud of our, our work there. So again, my big takeaway is from ILEARN. Again, science, absolutely out of the park. Biology, that, those scores are skyrocketing. Our fourth and sixth grade scores are continuing to grow. That's awesome. We certainly have opportunities for growth in ELA across grades three through eight, and certainly in, in middle school math. I actually received an email from one of our middle school math teachers saying, I have a few ideas. Here's some things I'd like to see us kind of try out. So we're going to work together with that. Again, our team's not satisfied with the data. We're looking for ways to improve, and we're going to execute. Elementary found, again, that key to growth in math, seeing that continual trend, that curve is a beautiful thing to watch. We saw intentional targeted intervention. And again, that consistent coherent curriculum that we've got, now that we have that established curriculum adoption we did for math a few years ago, that's been really really embraced by our elementary team, and we're seeing the results of that. Question with ILEARN, anything beyond what we've touched on so far?
I would say that that slide twenty or so, that ELA cohort.
Yeah.
Whatever's happened in fourth, fifth, sixth grade, whatever you guys did with the biology thing.
Yeah.
We need to take a hard look at it.
We need to.
Because we're way ahead of the state, and then we're below the state, and then we're barely catching back.
Those are conversations that we were having with our teams in our city.
I know you are.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a.
To me, that's the most noticeable thing of your slides.
Yes. And that's something that we talk about all the time. It's, it's not about good or bad data, right? It's about what are you doing with that data? I mean, we, our biology scores, yeah, they're great, but we could do better, right? So what are we doing to continue to see that growth? And we're in the same conversation with ELA and with math across the, across the district. IREED. Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So if I'm understanding the data correctly, or the remedy, right?
Yeah.
The data is what it is. We're taking kind of the, the methodology that we used in the elementary.
And applying it.
And applying it to the, that fourth, fifth, and, or, I'm sorry, the middle school approach, right? So we're, we're going to take what we learned in elementary school, implement that, and then, then is there anything in here about the testing changing? So if you, depending on where you get your news and the internet, there was a change in the testing. Is that impacting this negatively or positively?
You know, I, I could sit here and say yes, but I mean, can I point to a specific thing and say, this is what's changed? No, I can tell you, and I think I could probably speak for the majority of educators across the state, when you keep moving the target, it's, it's hard to hit it.
Sure.
So that's something that we try to focus on. Our emphasis is always, we teach the standards and we let the test results speak for themselves. And that's, that's kind of the, the message we send our staff. We've changed standards a few times since I've started my career at least. And again, that's something that, that's a real move of the target. How they're assessing it, I'm, I am hopeful. I'm going to say I'm, I am optimistic that the ILEARN checkpoints will give us a little bit more insight, more actionable data that relates directly to what the kids are going to see on ILEARN. That will allow us to have more intentional, more meaningful discussions about student assessment data and different interventions we can provide to accelerate students. But as it is, I, I really, I hate blaming the test. I, I, it is what it is. Everybody's playing by the same rules on that. So yes, there are changes. Yes, it's difficult. No, we're not going to make that as an excuse. We're going to say, hey, you know, it's a new set of rules. We need to adapt to them, and we, we work to prepare our teachers for that. So. Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So did I see it correctly that the incoming freshmen are going to be struggling a little?
Regarding math, is that correct here? Yeah, this would be for math. Yes. Yeah. Well, again, yes and no. Depends on how you want to, you want to attack that, right? If you're looking at from a, a testing perspective, yes, kids are struggling. And again, I'm not going to deny and say, oh, our kids are fine. Ignore that data. It means nothing. No, our kids are not demonstrating their proficiency on a state test. You know, that's not an accident. That's, it's, it's not one or two kids. That's, that's a, that's a large amount of kids that are struggling with that. So yeah, to answer your question, yeah, we're going to have students coming into the high school who struggle with math, but I feel like we have a, a very strong high school math team that led by, again, Amy Cole, Carol Sanquenetti, Kimberly Robinson needs it done. They do an excellent job when they get them there. They are actually former middle school. All of them are former middle school teachers, so they understand what it's like. They understand that transition through middle school, the challenges they face, and we're confident that they'll be able to kind of support those kids moving forward. We're actually going to talk about the SAT here in a little bit. I mean, these, these results aren't really new. We've seen this kind of happen over years. We're going to see how those results translate to the SAT at the end of this presentation. So.
Thank you.
Regarding IREED. So again, IREED, a little bit different. Again, like Rob mentioned, we kind of have moving targets every year, this or that. Last year was the first year, second graders were required to take the IREED. We had been giving it to them for the last couple of years, because if you were able to pass in second grade, you don't have to take it as third graders. So for us, it, one, gave our kids an opportunity to get that testing done early. But secondly, that data was useful for us to kind of target students going from second grade to third grade, and hey, are you on track to pass? Are you not on track to pass? How are we going to support those students? So as, as a district for our elementary, our goal is ninety-five percent passing rate for IREED three for our third graders, and then for second grade, we want to get seventy percent on track or passing. When I look at third grade, this is over the last, what, two, four, six, seven, eight years technically. We did not test IREED in twenty-twenty for obvious reasons. Before that event in twenty-twenty, we were pretty consistently above ninety percent. Even the year after, we were at ninety percent. But then, you know, actions have consequences. And then once we saw that, we saw a dip in scores in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we got down to eighty-three point and a half percent. We were nearing that state average. Last two years ago, we bumped that up to ninety-three point four percent. We are still above that ninety percent range. Again, not at our goal of ninety-five percent. But I think that we are in a really good position, as we'll see in just a second, to not just meet that goal, but surpass that goal. But again, well above state average, the state has yet to release those IREED scores. Actually, they release a few days from now, actually. So once I have that, I'll be able to share that with everybody as far as what the state average is and how that compares to us. This is fun. This is another fun graph for you, Eric. We have another bounce in achievement scores. This is our second grade students passing or on track for second grade. I did put an asterisk next to the calendar year in this, there for a reason. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, we're at sixty-nine point seven seven percent. Those kids went on to earn about ninety-three percent passing on IREED. Last year, or two years ago, I suppose now, we had fifty-four point eight percent of our kids passing IREED as second graders or on track to pass it. We got them up to ninety-one percent this past year. This last second grade class, over ninety percent of those kids, they either passed or on track to pass IREED. That is incredible. Not only does that blow our goal out of the water, but I am very eager to see what state averages are, because I think that dwarfs what the state average is going to be. That is incredible. That is something I would compare with any school in the state. I'm, I am eager to see them release that data because our second grade absolutely knocked it out of the park. Now, with that said, the reason that looks so dramatic compared to these other two is this is the first year that second graders were allowed to take the test twice. You're allowed to take it, obviously, in March is when IREED is given, and then you're allowed to give it in the summer session. So for some of our kids, we could give it to them at the end of the school year, so they don't have to come back over the summer. For kids who were not quite passing, or weren't, weren't close to passing, we invited them back to summer school. We gave them some summer school acceleration, and we were able to test them at the end of summer school. Third graders are able to take the test three times, once in the spring and then twice in the summer to help get them passed. Because again, if you don't pass IREED in third grade, you could possibly be retained in third grade. Takeaways, again, above ninety percent for the second year in a row for third grade. That's awesome. We absolutely crushed that second grade goal of seventy percent, jumping up to nine and a half percent. Again, over sixty percent spring on the first attempt for our second graders was, was a big key on that. So great first time instruction, great intervention support for our teachers following that. Questions on IREED?
Second graders that pass, not on track to pass, but pass, do not need to take it.
Correct. Do not need to, if you, if you pass. Yeah, exactly. And again, that helps us from a, from a teaching standpoint, that gives us a smaller population to focus that intervention on, as opposed to where we had only fifty percent were on passer, or passing or on track to pass. That, that's a larger group that we need to try to get back up to, to grade level. So really excited about the results on, on that. High school SAT. Welcome, Mr. Leach. Perfect timing. So just taking a look, SAT is one of those we'll talk about in a second. I always take the SAT results with a bit of grain of salt, but at the same time, it's a measure of achievement. It's required of all juniors in the state to take it. So we're going to take a look at that data. And if you look at Tipton, Tipton is the blue bar. The state average is in the, is the yellow bar, and the national average is the red bar. We are above state national average in all categories. There are both meeting expectations for math, Evan Space Reading Writing, and for passing both. So really excited about those results. And for passing both. So, uh, really excited about those results for our high school. Just looking historically, and again, just like with I read, just like with some of our, you know, our social studies in fifth grade. It's a different cohort every year. So you're going to get some change in numbers, but seeing that positive trend in evidence-based reading, writing is, is fantastic to see. Same with our math. Um, again, I know this doesn't, the percentage wise doesn't look fantastic, right? I mean, you're looking at mid to low 30%. Right. Passing, uh, math, but I will, I will point out by saying a couple of things. One. From a regional perspective, we are top five in both evidence-based reading and writing. And we are top five in, in, uh, math, uh, SAT results. And what was pointed out to me by, uh, the wonderful Amy Cole. Is that our math actually ranked 83rd out of 460 schools. That was the 82nd percentile. Of all high schools in the state of Indiana. That is incredible. So again, don't get discouraged by some of those percentages. A lot of kids are struggling with the SAT these days, but what matters is where do our kids fall compared to others? And again, our ELA 60th percentile there again, uh, above average for sure. Um, again, perspective on some SAT data. So SAT is a college readiness assessment, right? Some colleges, I don't know how many at this point. Um, some colleges still use it for, uh, getting into their, uh, their university. But I will tell you based off of the data that we have less than half of our high school graduates are going on to a four-year university. I'll allow them to go to trade school. Um, some of them go to military, some of them just go straight into a career. Um, that's why the state has kind of pushed all these different pathways is they recognize that not everyone's going to a four-year college. So when we're still required to administer, uh, college assessment, college readiness assessment to more than half our kids who are not going to college. It's a little more challenging to kind of get that motivation to, to really study and prepare for that sort of assessment. But. Again, like I said, as a district, we are above average and again, our math is, um. One of the, uh, top, top quartile there in the, in the state. So. That is, those are my takeaways. Uh, any questions from any part of this presentation? Sad to see it, see it end, but. Every, all good things do, do come to an end. Um, Rob, I'll pass it back to you.
Questions? I good? Um, with no further questions, we have 15 minutes left in your agenda to, to knock out the 2026, 27, uh, school. Calendar discussion.
Alright, so, uh, we'll, we'll hit the highlights here. So what you're looking at in front of you, I've, we presented the board with, uh, three options. Um, I, it's always nice to have a few options to choose from, right? Uh, I'll, I'll talk about some of the differences between these. The first one is the schedule is very similar to what we currently have. Uh, start of the school year is on a Friday, August 7th for the 26, 27 school year. Breaks run pretty much the same as this school year. Uh, we'll have a week fall break, the week of October 19th. Uh, three days off for, uh, Thanksgiving break. We've got our winter break here that will start on, uh, Wednesday. Christmas here falls on, uh, Friday here. Um, so that gives us a, a little bit of time there. Bouncing back over to January, uh, we started up back on a Wednesday, January 6th. We have our PD days, uh, first ones before school starts, August 6th. Second, we have scheduled for Tuesday, November 3rd. And then, um, uh, February 1st is, is the last one. Uh, again, uh, as far as, um. Uh, sorry, as far as, uh, makeup days, snow days, we have three asynchronous days. So I'm calling this the asynchronous schedule because that would be following what we currently do. When we have a snow day, uh, the first thing we do is, uh, we will call for an asynchronous learning day. So students, we get online. Find their assignments on Google classroom and complete those and turn those into teachers the next time they come in. We can do that up to three times in the school year according to the state. That's, uh, Indiana code. Uh, after that, we can start looking into, uh, snow makeup days and we have a couple built in. We have one on February 12th. Actually, February 15th is another one as well. That's President's Day. Uh, if we had two snow days beyond the three asynchronous days. Uh, we would use, uh, these two as our first ones. Uh, the one day before spring break starts is another flex day. And then if we need to, we could go into, uh, the first week of June, if we need to go that far. In this schedule, uh, graduation would take place on June 5th. This is pretty similar to what we've done in the past, just a few slight tweaks to adjust for. Time of the year that these different holidays fall on. The second option is similar, uh, a slight difference. I call this one synchronous option one, because in this case, instead of doing asynchronous learning. If we were to have a snow day, the state allows you to have synchronous learning, which is where you spend 50% of the day or more. In a live session with your teachers online. So kind of going back to those COVID times. I know that's a, that's a negative word for sure, but. Um, synchronous learning is we could do, uh, not an unlimited amount, but we can do as many as we need to, um. To, uh, provide for synchronous learning on snow days. That would remove the need for, uh, built-in snow makeup days. Uh, that would avoid the whole, you know. Do your lessons at home, turn in your assignment a few days later, mess with the attendance numbers because you have to wait for attendance based off of, you know, whatever comes back. What this ultimately does though, to the schedule, this option, we'd still start on the seventh, first, just one day Friday. Um, and then move on to the rest of the, the year. Uh, the rest of the breaks and days off, um, and holidays and PD days are all the same. Uh, the only thing that would be different is the end of school year because we would be removing, uh, two of those, uh, built-in snow days. We would end the school year two days earlier. Um, so that's kind of the benefit of that one. You'd have synchronous learning. And you would end the school year two days earlier. The third option again, is very similar to that. The only difference on this one, I shouldn't say the only difference, but the difference is this one is. If we wanted to bump up graduation to Memorial Day weekend, right? So that'd be May 29th. What we could do in addition to the synchronous learning days where we don't have those built-in snow days. We could also bump up our start of school year to Wednesday, August 5th. So kids would come Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then the weekend before the first full week of school. Uh, take off your two asynchronous, uh, take off your two, uh, makeup snow days. And that would get your end last day of school to be May 21st. Which would give our high school about a week to prepare for graduation on May 29th. Again. Uh, these are just three options. Um, I can let you know that the recommendation of the, uh, TCSD administration and our building leadership teams. Was the first option, the asynchronous, just similar to what we've been doing the last few years. Uh, that has worked really well for our teams. With the synchronous, I know a question that'll come up is connectivity, right? Will our kids have access to internet at home? If they are, um, expected to be learning live online at home. Uh, I believe, and I, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I know it's at least over 85%. Of our families in our community have access to wifi. I recognize that that is not a hundred percent, right? That means that not everybody has access to wifi at home. I will tell you that even the wealthiest districts not, you're not at a hundred percent, uh, wifi at home. All I will say, just to put that for you is that, that would be a barrier. That would be a challenge. For our, some of 15% roughly of our community to get their kids access to wifi to engage in online synchronous learning. So, uh, those are the three options. I, I know I've taken up a lot of your time, so please, you guys can have your discussion. Let me know if you have any questions.
Can you, what? Option one, I'm looking at how the days per semester break down.
Yeah, yeah. I have that here at the bottom. So, uh, first nine weeks be 42.
It's close. Okay.
Yeah, it's, and we worked kind of hard at that, trying to make sure.
You don't want it to be two weeks.
Way off. Yeah, that was something.
And it ends before Christmas then?
Yes. Uh, so the 22nd would be when it is. Yeah. And that's because again, Friday being a Christmas, it. We stopped on the 18th. That's a whole week basically before.
Yep. Okay.
I think, uh, I have a couple of comments, but the one I'll stick with now, um, what I kind of, some feedback I had just because, um. I had a graduating seniors last year is it was really tough to be that far into June with a graduation date. Simply because of jobs starting. I mean, I have a couple of boys that work out of state. Their training was the time at, you know, they missed that. Um, but even looking forward, I believe I wrote down that. Our county fair this year takes place June 23rd through 28th and the kids take their projects in June 20th. So. Just with all that in mind, I just, I remember being on the board when we thought Memorial Day wasn't a great option. And now experiencing, um, graduation later than that. It just felt like, it felt kind of far out. So.
I would agree with that. We had a senior this year as well and it felt far out for us as well. But I also recognize the difficulty in scheduling. Parties and people in town on holiday weekends. So I don't, I don't know how I. But I, I agree with it being, it felt very late.
I'm, I'm curious, why we take so many days for spring break? Instead of just the standard week, why is it a week plus two days plus a flex day?
That's, that's, I, I, I assume that's how it's been for a handful of years now. That's as far as I remember it. Um, I don't know when that changed over.
I think that Friday before became an issue because of the data of how many kids were missing on that. You know, Monday or on that Friday. And so I think that's why they finally just took it off. I'm not saying we have to, but the fifth or the Monday after, I don't. Know anything on that.
I mean. If the kids aren't here on a certain day. Do we get dinged for that somehow through the state?
It's just an attendance thing. So. There wouldn't, I don't think we would ever get to the point where it was such a dramatic that that would raise crazy red flags for the state. Um, it's really just, I mean, it's similar to what we did with fall break, right? We noticed that we had a dramatic drop in attendance. On those two days that we came here for fall break. And so, uh, we decided to move that way. As far as, as far as like. Consequences for having 10% of your school missing. I mean, it's lost instructional time, but aside from that, we, we don't get. You know, disciplined by the state because our families take their kids out early for spring break.
Also, if we know that the pork festival weekend is a big attendance weekend, is that an opportunity for a PD day?
It is, um, actually, we considered that, um, when we talked with the, uh, TA. They strongly recommended kind of spacing those PDs out a little bit more. We've got one in August. We used to do one in September. Um, and I think we originally were suggesting that, but then they came to us and said, hey, this would make more sense in November. We'll space out. Figure out what our needs are and then we could better make use of that time. Um, so it's not so back to back. So that's why we'd end up moving it to the third. And for, for that particular year, um, I, I, I know it's a, it's a midterm election year. November 3rd is an election day. So we figured with making that a professional development day, we can give our staff a little flexibility to make sure that they have an opportunity to vote at the polls. And also our students are seniors, obviously, who have the opportunity to, uh, attend, um, possibly vote and or work the polls.
Sure. I understand that. I, my recommendation was just based on some feedback that if we're going to have a PD day, make it, make sense that.
Yeah, no.
Use that, but I understand the voting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And again, that's, that's just, that's just a recommendation. Um, if you guys felt like, hey, you know, it. Probably be better for our community, better for our students if it's a second, that's, that's also an option, but, uh, that's just kind of where we, we fell on, on that decision where that came.
I think we've heard, I know the elementary likes to start on a Friday, but we've heard some feedback on that, that, you know, we start in the. Even given two days, but my thought was just like Beth said. Having the two days added to spring break, if we take those away, we could potentially start a week. That next week in August being the 11th and we'd have, um, four days and. I'm always one that I'd rather go later in the summer because May's never, it's very iffy. If it was June, but August is almost always nice. That was just a suggestion.
Another suggestion I, I mean, we've. This year I feel like it's maybe, I don't know, the first year for a full week at fall break. Um, back in the old days, they used to do parent teacher conferences during like.
Right.
Fall break. During the fall break. And so that way kids were already missing anyway, but, um, it's not an additional day. Out of the classroom. So I don't know if that could be something that we think about. Putting parent teacher conferences. Maybe on, in one of those. I just wonder how many families will, since we have a week, will be gone for vacation. I, I will be gone. It's possible to be, yeah. But I know one year, at least COVID, we did, we did virtual ones too, which I guess could be an option for those that can't attend, but.
And a lot with our, our back to our teacher, meet the teacher, uh, parent teacher meetings, you'd say, um. With our elementary, which is where it's especially popular, um, uh, those are, end up spreading out over multiple days and not just a single night too. So. I just, uh, just a thought there. Any other input on discussion for the calendar? Thank you guys.
Alright, we're, with that, we will adjourn our public hearing. And we will move, I'm sorry, we will adjourn our public work session and we'll move into our, uh, public hearing. So I called a order of public hearing. For an additional appropriation for the rainy day fund. Um, an additional appropriation of up to 500,000 is being requested from the rainy day fund. To cover expenses related to the 2025 THF roofing project until our bonds are sold here in a bit. Uh, upon the closing of the bonds, these appropriated funds that we're approving tonight be returned to the fund. Um, so I think the, the agenda item, um, that I had for was public comment. Uh, regarding the additional appropriation. So with that being said, we have the floor open for public comment. And don't rush it. Just. Alright, seeing none, um, I will go ahead and adjourn the, uh, public hearing on the additional appropriation. And, uh, we will, I would ask for a vote of recess until, uh, 6:30 for our regularly scheduled meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'd love to adjourn the session. Second.
I had a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. We are adjourned.
Yeah.
It's there.
I don't know. I don't know.
All right. It is 6:30. I'll call to order the, uh, Tipton Community School Corporation School Board meeting, um, for Tuesday, August 12th. Uh, Jen, if you would help us with the pledge of allegiance and the vision statement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Growing empowered, future ready students who are prepared for a lifetime of opportunity and success.
All right. So welcome to everybody. Uh, just wanted to take a moment, um, to recognize that Dr. Glaze has not gotten younger. Uh, but he is absolutely, he's out since August 4th with a knee, or a knee replacement. So, uh, that is why he's absent tonight. So just wanted to make everybody aware that, uh, uh, they were explaining his absence, if you will. And with that, Scott, I think you had an announcement as well.
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to take a moment and acknowledge, um, uh, the passing of our, uh, Tipton High School library, Julie Westner. Um, Julie was a, a kind soul who, uh, brought joy to everyone she, she spoke to. She's gonna be sorely missed on our team. Uh, not somebody that's easy to replace, obviously. And, um, I know she was a mother, a grandmother, um, and just a kind shoulder, somebody to talk to, um, in our high school. So, um, please join me in a, a moment of silence in her honor. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you. All right. Before we get started tonight, I need a, a motion and a second to modify the agenda. Uh, the agenda came to us today. Um, I would like to make a motion and get a second to, um, first modify, uh, based on the public work session we had. Um, we need some more work on our 26, 27 school calendar. So I'd like to remove that from a vote tonight until Scott can run down some of the suggestions that were made here. Um, and then second of all, I would like to remove the personnel report from tonight's consent agenda. Um, we'll vote on the rest of the consent agenda as far as the, the bills and all that stuff, but remove the, uh, personnel report and approve that with the next one next month.
Those two separate things? You want to vote on those together?
Uh, well, yeah, probably a good, let's, let's, um, make a motion to, uh, modify the agenda to remove the 2026 and 2027 academic calendars for vote. Got a motion and a second to remove the 26, 27 academic calendars from the, uh, agenda tonight. Uh, all those in favor, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That, um, that is removed. I'll also be looking for a motion to modify the agenda to remove, uh, just the personnel report from, uh, this agenda until we get that straightened out. So I'll be looking for a motion to remove, uh, the personnel report from the consent agenda for this evening.
What does that mean for people who were hired if we don't include that in the vote?
They would still continue to work just as they have, and it's just simply still pending an official approval. Um, everything else still operates the same. It's just a matter of it hasn't gotten your formal blessing. Each summer, uh, you guys, uh, grant the power to the superintendent to hire, uh, personnel over summer. Cause again, for example, at the end of a school year, or sorry, before the start of a school year, we have position opens up, we have to make decisions quickly so that we have our fully staffed. Um, so we would simply operate status quo until the next vote.
I move to, um, remove the personnel report from the consent agenda.
All right. I have a motion and a second to remove that personnel report from the consent agenda. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? All right. Motion carries and that is removed. So thank you for that, uh, little, uh, modification to the agenda. So now we move on to the fun stuff, right? So this is the tell me something good portion of, of our, um, board meeting. And this is an opportunity for the school board to talk about some things that they've seen with the beginning of the school year, uh, that are good and, uh, wanna, wanna be, uh, um, I guess, talked about from here. So with that, I'll open this up to, uh, tell me something good, uh, from the board.
I think the Blue Devil Bash was, um, an obvious one to, to talk about. Um, Mr. Jaworski did a great job organizing that, but I think on a, like a microscopic point of the giant, um, event was, um, I floated through most of the buildings all night. Um, and to see how excited those elementary kids were to see Ms. Wiggington and Mr. Johnson, like giving them hugs and bouncing up and down, couldn't contain their energy, them, I'd just be normal, I don't know. Um, but they were so excited to see them again. And then in the middle school, um, one of my kids, um, at one point, Mr. Ayers and Dr. Hackman were walking through the hallway and she just says, oh, hey, guys, da, 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 da. I'm like, hey, guys, that's Mr. Ayers and Dr. Hackman. And she's like, eh. And they were like, no, they're, she's just that comfortable and it's fine. Um, and then in the high school, all of the kids that were, um, giving Mr. Lyde and Mr. Leach a hard time. And in fact, my daughter came home second day of school and says, Mr. Leach is gonna be my best friend by the end of the year. So I think that just really speaks to the, um, leadership that we have in the buildings and how comfortable all of these kids are that they were all really excited to come back.
Anybody else? I had one. Um, I don't know, but I was just looking for it on my phone. So, um, but I noticed again, another, uh, recognition and award for our, um, ag teacher today.
Mrs. Hartley.
Um, from Purdue. And so I know that's on the FFA page and some of that stuff. And, but, uh, it just seems like once or twice a year that, that name and the, some accolade pops up. And so we're really blessed to have, um, not only the greenhouse, but then good people to help the kids in the greenhouse. So I was, I was, uh, thrilled to see that. So that was mine.
I promise not to steal your Blue Future Award from you, Mr. Leach. But from a parent's perspective, I just want to call out just our administration, our guidance council at the high school level. I mean, I can't imagine organizing schedules and responding to students, let alone my own. And, um, just what a great start, what a great start. Thank you for just the extra time and attention you give our, as a family, we are so thankful for just the help and the after hours things that you guys do.
Anybody else? All right. Well, with that being said, Jen, you didn't steal all the thunder. We'll move right into Blue Future Awards. Um, Mr. Jaworski.
Yeah, uh, we will actually invite up our, uh, Tipton High School Athletic Council, uh, first with Mr. Leach.
All right. Um, so, uh, I wanted to, to recognize these four, and then there's three others that couldn't make it. Cause I mean, they're, they're gonna be part of a council and I'll explain that here in just a second. Um, but these are the kids that get kind of involved in everything. So the other three are kind of involved in doing stuff. And I think each one of these were like, I think I can make it, but I'm not sure. They ended up checking their schedules. But, um, the reason, uh, for recognizing them now is over the summer, we attended, uh, the IHSA Student Leadership Conference. So we hopped in a minibus and, uh, went down to the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. Uh, they got to do fun things like ride around the track and, and hear the history of the track. But then they also got to go through several sessions, uh, that they're supposed to bring back that, that knowledge to be leaders in our school, uh, for student athletes. So, um, they, they took a summer day. took a summer day voluntarily. I didn't even like have to trap them or talk to their parents first and trick them onto the bus or anything like that. And they just went for a day of learning. And then, that's kind of grown into something. As I was sitting with some other administrators, they talked about how the kids they take to that generally form an athletic council, which we haven't had at Tipton High School. So, with the addition of Mr. Quinn, kind of ran it about by him, and then he kind of picked up and ran with it. So, the seven that went over the summer are going to now volunteer even more their time to help guide our athletic programs, help kick up school spirit, sportsmanship, and all that in the coming school year. So, I wanted to take the time to recognize these guys for the time they spent and the time that they will spend to make Tipton High School an even better place. And then, the last thing is, because we add this athletic council, then we'll be in the pursuit of our sportsmanship banner, which I'm not sure how long it's been since the athletic program has had that. So, that'll be another addition and another kind of gold star with the IHSA. So, I want to thank these guys. We've got Isla Wolfert, Ava Higginbotham, Peyton Noller, and Evan Coe here, and then Emerson Atkins, Kennedy Lancaster, and Quinn Smith. He's out doing soccer stuff. So, the Tipton High School Athletic Council. And then, my second Blue Future Awards are going to, and you did kind of steal a little bit of the thunder, so some of this will be a little repetitive, but that just shows how much we appreciate them, right?
That's right, absolutely.
I'd like to call Mrs. Wright, Mrs. Glassburn, and Mrs. Capshaw to the front. And I'm going to say like some words about some of the things that they do, and then, like, it's going to be just kind of like the tip of the iceberg. But this is the Tipton High School Guidance Department. Mrs. Wright is at the desk when kids come in and they're running late, or they're the one, she's the one that answers the phone when doctor's appointments and organizing records and doing everything that, you know, behind the scenes that you don't always appreciate. But, you know, 10 years after graduation, she's also the person you call for a transcript, or, "Hey, do you remember this?" And she is kind of the keeper of a lot of that knowledge. So, Mrs. Wright's been around for a long time, and she's always done a really good job to keep us organized, in compliance. And she is the first to make sure that Mr. Lyde and I know when a student might need a pick-me-up or kind of a kick in the butt to get to school, get there on time. And I think that goes a long way for our kids. So, she's, I mean, consistency and the things that we need in a registrar. And then, Mrs. Glassburn and Mrs. Capshaw. They, I mean, we've got, you know, 460 kids in our building, and they meet with them several times over the four years. And with the diploma changes in the state of Indiana, and even before that, kids want to do a lot of stuff, whether it be dual credit classes or go to an internship. We had kids last year, Dan Young and Cherry Automotive, and working with Hardened Digital. I mean, they're keeping track of all of this stuff and making sure that our kids get the classes they need and that they want, and that they have a platform to kind of jump off as a Tipton High School graduate and ready to go, whether that's in a trade school, going into the military, or in some cases, getting their freshman year taken care of for college, depending on, you know, what kind of dual credit and that kind of work that they do. But, but keep it all close. The start of the school year is really, really rough, and you mentioned the amount of time they spend talking to parents to make sure that even parents are on board with what we're doing. But I think, what was the schedule request at this point? So, they build all of the schedules, school starts, and then they still have 177 meetings that they have to have with kids because a kid comes in and says, "I don't like auto service, and I prefer to do culinary," and all that. So, it's a massive puzzle, and these guys do an outstanding job to make sure our kids get what they need, and they do it with care. And they just do it for kids, and it's awesome. The IHSA Guidance Department.
All right, next we're going to call up the Tipton Blue Devil merchy band. While they're making their way up here, I will say selfishly, I was fortunate enough to be granted an all-access pass by Ms. Lisa Wallen to get onto the track with these fine individuals. And they were kind of let me take pictures of them during the event. And I got to tell you, like I said selfishly, I love that, I love that kick when I see all those like buttons happening on Facebook. I can tell you that this is a very popular group of students in our community. You guys did a fantastic job. Again, finished second in Class A at the State Fair and won the caption award for music at the State Fair as well. So, again, absolutely incredible performance. Like I said, I don't know what it was like in the stands, but on ground level, it was incredible. Remind me, what was the name of the show again? It was Rock? Rock Through the Ages, all right? Absolutely phenomenal music, and obviously, they performed really well. Love this team, all right? These guys are awesome. And it's a credit to their hard work. It's a credit to Ms. Wallen's direction. And I just want to give everybody a quick round of applause for our Tipton Blue Devil.
I just want to say, taking a show, a theatrical musical show on the road to multiple locations across the state does not just happen. We have had parents and our Tipton band boosters who have been coordinating efforts for over a year for this season to try to make sure it was fiscally solvent, and coordinating community efforts, community funds that have come in, coordinating parent involvement and parent volunteerism, you know, getting these kids dressed, getting them fed, getting their equipment, not just to the location, on the field, off the field. I mean, I, we've, it's just been tremendous this year, and the amount of support we've had from the community, from the school, from our parents. I mean, we talk about like the year of effort that goes into a season, but we also had parents that would be like, "Hey, I see it's really windy today. Do you want me to just sit on a prop so it doesn't fall on a kid?" Yes. And so, I really have to thank the parents. I also want to thank our leadership team because a band is driven a lot by its senior class and the focus that they have for their season and what they want it to be. So, this senior class has been really great. Our leadership team has been really hard workers, and it really shaped up to be a fantastic season because of the hard work and effort of these kids.
Next, we will call up actually our middle school team.
Hey, I don't remember who said it first. It may have been Craig or it may have been me, but I have a similar office group that I want to honor. If I could ask for Ms. Andrea Westner, Ms. Abigail Westner, and Ms. Kara Conger to come on up here for me, that would be great. Okay, and I want to make sure that I honor these three wonderful individuals because kind of similar to Craig, and it's a little bit different, obviously, in the middle school environment because we don't necessarily have diploma requirements that we've got to do. We do still, obviously, have new enrollments that happen over the summer. And, you know, as we're finishing the summer period and moving into the school period, you know, there's a lot of work that happens over the summer that no one ever sees except for frankly, me. You know, I mean, I'm watching as these things are happening, watching as parents are coming in, getting transfer requests from other districts. And I just got to say, I mean, these three ladies right here have been just collectively the best thing. I mean, whether it's making sure that they're scheduling tours for new students, getting record requests, which Jen and Andrea heard last year, it's a lot harder than you might think it is for certain schools, right? Okay, getting forms filled out, verifying residency, planning honors placement tests, which has to happen, building schedules for students. Of course, they've scheduled the tours, but I have to give the tours. It's a lot. Andrea, of course, our middle school receptionist and enrollment czar, as I say, obviously takes care of all the clerical stuff. It's been a wonderful joy. Ms. Abigail Westner gave most of the tours over the summer, and despite the grimace that she's making right now, she's very friendly when she's doing it, answers a lot of great questions as a student. Makes sure they feel very welcome. Obviously, they can talk to her about things that they maybe don't first want to ask their principal, which is obviously wonderful. And then, Ms. Conger, of course, taking care of the schedules, taking care of testing. Actually, my favorite story from over the summer was I got a transfer request. I called the parent because it was like, I think, Tuesday, like right before school was starting. So, I called them, see if, see, excuse me, saw if they need to get in. They said, "Sure, let's get in." They came into the building. I'm like, "Well, no way. We have a schedule built for them." So, I apologized and said, "I can give you a tour around the building even if you don't end up, you know, getting a schedule." And Ms. Conger from like all the way back in the cave of the office was like, "I already made it for you." So, they were just so fast, and it just made it so that it was such a great summer. I also want to make sure while I talk about Ms. Conger, TMS Rocks also happened last week on Monday, a wonderful sixth-grade orientation. I had so many sixth graders on the first day of school who were just saying, "This was a really good day. This was really easy. I got into my locker. I felt really comfortable." My teachers, I didn't struggle, and that's because of a wonderful day. But she really puts on, you know, along with the rest of the office staff, but she's the one playing it all and making sure that it's all happening. So, just a team of people who made for a great start of the school year. Enrollment continues to be on the positive trajectory at Tipton Middle School, which is wonderful. If you look back two years ago, we're still about 3% up from where we were then, which is better than it was when I was first coming here to Tipton Community School Corporation. So, loving to see that these wonderful women are making that happen and making for a great start for our new Blue Devils whenever they come. So, do I need to give them a round?
If I could have our whole district custodial team come up, that would be wonderful, the whole group, okay? All right, going back to what Ms. Feg said a little bit ago, if you were here for Blue Devil Bash, you saw that our custodial crew did an amazing job of preparing our buildings for that event and continue to do that each and every day and night. And so, we wanted to bring them up and recognize them for their efforts, not only for the day-to-day, but the summer work that they did as well. So, the buildings are beautiful. Keep it up, and we appreciate you guys a ton.
I also want to make sure specifically thanking my middle school custodial group. I worked at a building where we contracted out with an outside group, and the custodial team would come up and they just, it was doing a job. But here, it feels like they're family. And so, we've got Heather Goodnight, who is our third shift. Danny was unable to be here this evening, but I am really excited that Lori Carter, oh, I'm so sorry, Lori Wilborn, who recently married Danny Wilborn last Friday, truly did continue to grow their family together here. So, an exciting summer.
And I think I need to add, because really, I can't call out my high school custodial staff because all of them were in the high school for the majority of the summer, stripping floors and doing stuff that is not fun. And the buildings do, they look phenomenal. They, not that they looked bad in the past, but it looks, it looked great, and our kids, I think, noticed it when they came in. So, they're always so flexible, and, you know, you get ahold of Nita or Kathy in the high school, and it's done as quick as possible. And that's, I really appreciate that.
Sorry, last but not least, I just wanted to, this is from Dr. Glaze. He wanted to make sure, he wanted to make it a point while he was out, that we acknowledge the work of our TCSC maintenance and facilities staff. We were fortunate enough to see for Dan Benefield to join us today on behalf of our maintenance and facilities crews. Again, these buildings don't operate by accident. It's not, it's not easy keeping, surprisingly, it's not easy keeping a district our size up and running constantly 24/7. Again, it's, whether it's air conditioning, whether it's keeping the buses operational, whether it's just the campus grounds being free from hazards. I know Mother Nature likes to throw a wrench every now and then. We're down tree branch here, or some roofing here. Again, our facilities and building are not just functional, but they also just a simple look. Again, that's a combination between our custodial staff and our maintenance and facilities crews. And Dr. Lacy, I wanted to make sure we recognize the efforts of our team. So, again, this goes to Dan Benefield, Eric Johnson, and Mark West. So, again, big round of applause for our And that concludes our Blue Future Awards.
Right. And now, if you were here for Blue Future Awards, it's downhill from here. So, if you wanted to leave, this would be your chance to hit the door. But if, as they exit, we move to our next portion of the agenda, which is comments from the community. And I think, Jen, we have two this evening.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, go ahead. First, we have Robert Weinberger. Am I saying that correctly? Hi, thank you so much. So, I'll start my timer. We'll give you about three minutes, okay? We understand.
Do I need to tell you where I live and all that?
No. No.
Well, we're in Madison Township. We moved here about six years ago. My daughter's in second grade. As many have voiced on social media, I'm very frustrated with transportation. I think my daughter's ride is now about 50% longer. I want to point out that I appreciate the work you all did and that the corporation did, because I know it's not your fault. But I'm going to make sure it's on public record that I do not agree with our state representatives meddling with the local school district. We moved here for a reason, and I wanted to point that out. So far as I will give you my $300 tax rebate, whatever they say, I'm not going to give you this mess, and I'll give it right back to the school. That is literally all I wanted to say. I want to say thank you, and I want to say that I do not appreciate our state. SCA won. It's probably the worst legislation I've seen in 18 years.
Thank you so much. Okay, next, Laura Sotan.
I also wanted to talk about the transportation issue. I've been coming to these meetings for like nine years religiously, and we're always celebrating working together for student success. We celebrate teamwork and all of that. But I think in the whole mess with how the bus routes were devised, the thing that really gets me and upsets me the most is how our bus drivers were treated, quite honestly. I do not understand why they were not consulted first and given the option to say, to figure out what the issue and how to fix it. Because if anybody knows how to fix it, it's those guys. They've been driving for 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. They know these roads like the back of their hand. They know such granular detail about it. They can tell you that nothing about this was efficient or cost-effective. It was such a disservice to the bus drivers and the parents and the students. And my child's route, for example, was the one that had to stand outside yesterday for 18 minutes, 70 kids with two eights, while the Boys and Girls Club route ran, and then came back and picked them up after all the buses had left. And it's just unacceptable. But I will give credit where credit is due, and that is that it was changed today. And I understand going forward that bus drivers are now being asked how to fix it. And I understand going forward that bus drivers are now being asked how to fix it. They are experts, and if it can't be figured out by them, it cannot be done. And I just think we owe a debt of gratitude to those legs that we stand on as we promote our school, the success of our school, to those legs that we stand on, like the bus drivers, like the staff, who work their tails off and know how to do their job. And I just honestly think it's very disrespectful when we don't use common sense to go to the experts to figure this out, instead of it coming from the top down. So again, I'm appreciative that moving forward, it's going to be addressed, but it just seems like it shouldn't have even come to this point. And when feedback was given, they were not listened to, and we need to do better by them, quite honestly. So, and again, time equity was the whole reason why this was done, and there was nothing, there was nothing effective or cost effective about this. So again, I appreciate going forward that it's being looked at and it's going to be changed. But going forward, we really need to listen to those experts. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I would say from the school board's perspective, to your point, both of our representatives voted in opposition to SCA1, right? So giving credit where credit is due, the people that represent us voted against this legislation. That doesn't change the outcome, but hopefully that helps you understand that they were trying to, you know, prevent this at the end of the day. And then we've been very consistent since the beginning in the transportation issue, that we're going to collect data over a period of time and see if the changes enacted the, what we wanted. The first week of school is always tumultuous, whether it's the front desk people or the transportation. And so we will look at the data as it comes in, and we will make those adjustments accordingly. But we, you know, we, we did, I'm not going to get into, I will tell you, we're going to collect data, and we're going to make data-driven decisions, not only in our academics, but also in our operations as we look to absorb these losses that we have coming to us, so. Understand.
Mr. Jorski, when you, when these changes were made to the transportation because of the bill, do you have an idea in your mind what you were hoping to save?
Yeah, so obviously, as mentioned before, with the impacts of Senate Act 1, that's a direct attack, seems like a strong word, but it's a direct impact on our operations fund. I mean, property taxes is exactly what funds our operations. Operations like having the lights on, being able to run this board meeting publicly and through online. And most importantly, and a huge chunk of that is transportation. And we've, I've had conversations, not just, not just in my grad classes, but then through all of our superintendent conferences, both within the state and nationally. Personnel is the number one cost to a school district. And so when you are looking at making cuts to your operations fund due to property tax cuts, transportation personnel is one of those things. So by removing two routes, that's not just removing the miles that you're putting on a bus, that's not just the gas that's being saved. Because again, those things are counteracted by the fact that other bus routes are now longer, right? They're on the road longer, so the buses themselves are not changing. But what changes is the amount of time that our personnel are on the road, and multiply that by 180 days throughout the school year, that's a large chunk compared to, you know, when we sit down, we have conversations with our staff about looking at curriculum materials, and okay, how do we cut some paper clips there? How do we cut some paper down here? Yeah, those matter. Pennies make dollars, right? But at the end of the day, as any superintendent or any school district will tell you, personnel, salary benefits, those are the number one costs. So when we're looking at operations and we need to make cuts in operations, unfortunately, transportation is kind of up there as one of the things, particularly when we can devise routes that will still cover our county. Is it, is it perfect? Is it ideal? Is it what we want? Absolutely not. Again, we didn't, as Weinberger pointed out, we didn't ask for this. But these are the consequences of, you know, decisions of actions. And so we are simply doing what we can, what we have. Is our plan perfect? Probably not. And to Ms. Suton's point, it's something that we want to make sure we're taking a close look at, of how we can adapt that plan moving forward. So as far as what we're trying to accomplish, we're trying to save dollars, bottom line.
I just wondered if you had a monetary number in mind?
Oh, a specific number? Sorry, I'll go on a tangent.
Not specific, but just in general, what you were hoping that doing this would save?
I don't have that off the top of my head, yeah. But if you're going to, if you're going to make an impact, I mean, what, we're realizing about 200,000 or so loss, 220 loss in funding property taxes this year alone. Two routes is not going to cover that, but it does make an impact. And so that's something that we take a look at. We also, Dr. Glaze and I talk about this all the time, you know, when there's opportunities to have reductions in force based off of, what am I trying to say? Attrition, thank you. Where, you know, somebody has left a position, we just simply don't fill that position. Those are the kinds of decisions that we make to try to save money here and there. And again, like I said, personnel is the fastest way to make that.
I don't know how the rules work, but can I ask one of the speakers a question?
Yeah.
Robert, second grade student bus ride got 50% longer, roughly. Are they still riding the bus? If you can find another option, would you take it? A parent, a neighbor? This is what I think is going to skew our data. The kids that live across the street from me get on the bus 45 minutes before school, and it's a mile to the school. It used to be 45 minutes, now it's an hour before school. They don't get on the bus anymore, and I see a car come and pick them up. So I think our changes, and this isn't a criticism, I'd say this is going to be a result of the data, but if people are going to see it's an extra 15, 20, 30 minutes on the bus, I'm going to find an alternative, because that's, like Andrea has, I don't know, four, five, eight, nine kids, what do you have now? They get on the bus before seven. I know. They get on the bus before seven, that's hard. That's really hard. And I think they're going to be finding, so it's going to skew our data. We're going to go, oh, look, less people are riding. We made the right decision, but less people are riding because, I mean, I'm not here, I haven't seen how the line is. Mr. Johnson's out there greeting the students. I'm good. I don't know. I'm not asking you to answer, but he might be someone to ask it, but it looks like the line's getting longer and, and, I don't know. It's just something, I don't know how, I love your spreadsheets. I don't know how we squeeze that into a spreadsheet, how many people are not coming because their bus ride got longer. Now we can drop another bus route out. Now bus rides get even longer. It could spiral.
Yeah.
That's my fear.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a long time for a second grader.
Were parents contacted to ask if, regardless of whether it was a five-minute bus ride or an hour bus ride, if they were still going to bring their children?
No, we have not surveyed families on their intentions regarding that. Every, everybody gets contacted who, bus drivers contact, anybody who's on their ride saying, hey, I'll be your bus driver this year. As far as, you know, that specific type of question, I don't believe that's been, that's been asked.
Well, I mean, I would think the bus drivers would probably know some of that also, especially if there's houses that they always drive by, and there's five kids that they know live there, but they never pick them up.
Yeah.
You know, again, I think input from the bus drivers would have been extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Well, I know last year, when some of the routes are longer or kids are getting, kids are getting picked up earlier.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, got it. With the routes being some longer and then getting on earlier, and we had changed our policy, I know last year, sometimes my kids would get to the school like 7:33 and then just sit on the bus for seven minutes. Seven minutes doesn't sound like a long time, but it is in the morning, and seven extra minutes just sitting on the bus, just, just sitting there, I think is unnecessary. So we had changed that policy, I think, last month or two months ago. Is that being followed?
As far as time that kids are on the bus?
Our buses, I think we changed it so buses should not even arrive to the school premises until 7:40. So we're having buses to sit there for.
From what, I, I don't know offhand exactly the time the buses are lining up in front of the parking lot. When I've gone out there at 7:35, I've seen four buses lined up, so I'm assuming that some are there before 7:35. And like Rob pointed out before, that's a part of the first week of school. What we do is we see how consistent that's happening, and if that's a regular occurrence, then we can start having conversations. I know, I think, Laura, you mentioned this, Lori Crawford, who's our transportation director, she is taking in feedback. I had a conversation with her today. We're taking in feedback from our drivers, you know. What we wanted to do is see how this initial route worked, get their input over the first week, based off of that. And again, based off of some of the changes with the Boys and Girls Club busing, we're able to alleviate some of those extremely long routes. I know one of our drivers, Dixie Cessna, has a particularly long route right now. That's one that we're looking at, see what are ways that we can maybe shift some off of that particular route. But again, it's a matter of looking at where we're at over the course of several days, so that there's some consistency to, hey, this isn't just a fluke, this is happening regularly. And then we can start adapting based off of that. So again, to what we've kind of been reiterating, it's, let's play it out, see how it works, and after a little bit of time, we start seeing a pattern, we can start addressing some of those significant complaints. Because again, like we said, we don't want to have kids on the bus forever. And again, that was one of the things I was concerned about too when I went out there, is I'm like, I got four buses lined up waiting to drop off, and they're sitting on the bus for five plus minutes now. Like you said, doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're on a bus full of kids, even if it's the morning, that can get a little, a little stressful. So again, I appreciate it, but that's something that we, Lori and I take a look at.
Communication wise, should bus drivers or parents who have concerns direct those via email to Lori and copy you?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. Again, communicate with your bus driver first and foremost, obviously. But again, if your bus driver is like, yeah, I know this is the route we have, this is what we're working on right now. If you do have a concern as a parent, you can contact Lori, you can contact myself. Either of us would be more than happy to take those calls, take those messages, and try to find a solution for you. You know, there are some times where we can't just change an entire route for just an individual parent's, you know, request, but if we get some in, and we say, hey, there's a major issue with this particular route, maybe we need to take a closer look at that and see what we can do to adjust that.
I can't agree more with most every comment that was said today, and I respect Mr. Weinberger for what you even said. And I, I mean, I feel like as a board, we're feeling these effects of SCA1, right? And this is just like the first part of a talking point of where our school is, you know, seeing some effects. I'm not saying we can't do better, and we're, we're trying to, but I just, I don't know, feels like a, one of the first talking points of where, you know, it's what I feel like as a board member right now as a result of that. And I don't like it, I don't like it for our kids, but at the same time, I mean, all of these things have to be, come under consideration if we're going to do well by our school as a whole.
Well, thank you for the comments from the community and from the board. At this mo, at this moment, we'll just move on to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the agenda that we have modified, the approval of the minutes from our regular session and executive session in July 8th, the approval of claims for July 18th and August 1st, and our accounts payable claims for August. The approval of field trips, we did not have any in this particular packet, but we did have, or do have in this consent agenda, the approval of some donations. One for the Tipton County Foundation for My Closet, and another one from Caldwell Monument, which was a donation towards our Summer Academy. And we'd probably be remiss if we didn't thank all those businesses that really stepped up to help us with the Summer Academy food and festivities.
Yeah, I will make one quick note. The Schmidt Associates Architects that have worked with us in the past, they actually are paying for lunch. Now, it's not on here because they haven't done that yet, but they promised, yes, just we, once we get the bill, we can send it to them and they will pay for that. So I want to make sure we give them some credit there as well.
Thank you. So I'll be looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda minus the personnel report dated August 2025.
I move to approve the consent agenda minus the personnel report.
I'd have a motion in a second. Any further questions on this? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus the personnel report, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. The superintendent's report, Mr. Jaworski, you're on for the certified appraisal plan.
This one is a little less engaging than my student achievement data, so apologize, not PowerPoint, this is a PDF file, but this is a standard process that we follow each and every year. At the start of the school year, the school board is asked to approve the certified appraisal plan that we evaluate all of our certified staff on, teachers, administrators. So with that, we're going to walk through the data. This is all kind of laid out in Indiana code. Walk through our data, go over the plan, how it works, and then take any questions that you may have. So this is our plan for the 2025-2026 school year. We start by looking at previous year's annual evaluation statistics. Again, you guys can read a chart as well, I can. Highly effective percentage was 67% in 2019-2020. We did have two teachers that year rate improvement necessary. In 2020-2021, that highly effective rate was at 56%, and we were up to five teachers who were under an improvement necessary umbrella there. 21-22, 40% highly effective, and three improvement necessary, one was identified as ineffective. 22-23, we had 46% highly effective, and just two as improvement necessary. And then finally, 23-24, 45% were highly effective, improvement necessary just one. Oh, we do have the 24-25 statistics. We were up to 54% highly effective across the district with just one improvement necessary there as well. So again, key aspects related to Indiana code, again, you have to develop a plan, and each school corporation must create a plan for evaluating certificated employees annually. Components to that plan have to include at least an annual performance evaluation for your certified staff. Those categories are highly effective, effective, improvement necessary, and ineffective. Again, just to give a little quick clarification, when you fall under an improvement necessary, you get put on essentially a 90-day improvement plan. Your billing administration work with you, you get paired with a, with a supervising or supportive teacher who will work with you from the staff, and essentially, we lay out some goals, and you work towards meeting those goals. You meet those goals, we move you out of the improvement necessary category up into effective or highly effective. So that's the, that's the purpose of this evaluation plan, is to kind of identify areas of need and then make necessary support as required. Alternative plans, again, school corporations can choose to adopt pre-existing plan models. There are ones like TAP, PAR, I, there was about a dozen that I looked at this summer as part of my grad school. And as thrilling as those are to kind of dive through and compare, I think that what we have is perfectly sufficient. I'm not going to sit here and say I think it's the best evaluation tool possible, but that takes some time and concerted effort. That's something we're actually planning to look at as a team, not just administration, but also working with the TEA to consider what are some ways we could possibly improve that. As it is right now, we need to have a plan in place for this year. The hope is that by the start of next school year, we might have something a little bit different that might be able to show a little bit, be a little more, I'll say, a little more meaningful, a little bit more supportive for our staff. Again, the evaluation process, we have to talk through plan details, how evaluations are conducted. We'll go over that in just a second. The evaluator assignment, again, employees can request a different evaluator if they choose. So for example, you get evaluated by a building principal, and you're like, hey, I didn't feel like that was a fair shake, I'd like to try something different. There's a couple options. Either one, you can ask that administrator to observe you again on a different day, maybe just the kids were having a really rough day, maybe you were having a really rough day. You're like, hey, can you come back and reevaluate me or re-observe me? Our teachers do that on occasion. Rarely, rarely do we have the time where we will have a teacher request a different administrator. That can be from the same building, that can be from a different building, but teachers have the opportunity to request a different evaluator to observe them. And again, public disclosure, we have to explain to the governing body and the public media before evaluations begin, that's what this is. 2025-2026 certified plan, again, our plan, how it works. All certified staff get two long observations, one that is planned, that is done the first semester, and one that is unplanned, that is done the second semester. When I say unplanned, it's saying, hey, we're going to, I'm going to come sometime in this range, let me know times to avoid, because again, you don't want to walk in and the kids are all testing. That's not really a great lesson to observe. So again, we do offer pre-observation conferences with teachers, that is optional. So again, we do offer pre-observation conferences with teachers that is optional, that is up to the staff member if they would like to have that. That's really just more benefit to the teacher if they want to, you know, take the time to explain exactly what lesson plans are coming up and kind of share what the focus is on for that week or that, that day. Again, that's something that is optional for our staff. What is required though is a post-observation conference. So once the administrator has completed their observation, they submit that. In SFS, the teacher has an opportunity to view it and then there is a post-conference where there's discussion between the administrator and the teacher for how that observation went and additional information following up the lesson. At least one walkthrough per grading period, that's something that we've done and for, for some of us, we can sometimes get in a few extra times. That's something we really encourage for new staff, just kind of help provide them a little bit of extra support. But the one walkthrough per grading period is part of that evaluation. Smart Goal Pilot is something that we're doing this year. So something that each building, we've kind of put out there, it's something we want to implement as part of our evaluation plan the following year, is giving our teachers the opportunity to establish smart goals, whether that is professional development based, whether that's student achievement based. We want our students, we want our staff to establish a smart goal that will kind of help guide their development, guide their professional development over the course of the year. And like I mentioned before, the nine-day improvement plan option, that is when you have a teacher who is on improvement necessary, we put them on an improvement plan and like I said, we provide them as many supports as possible to attain the goals that are set in front of them. So I believe that is it. Are there any specific questions related to the certified appraisal plan?
Yes, I have a couple.
Yeah.
You are specifically referring to certified staff.
Yes.
What about the teachers that aren't certified?
So you're not, you're, you're classified staff then, so you like your aides or is that what you're referring to or?
Certified, some teachers that are not certified.
Teachers that are not a certified staff member, they fall under a classified. Now, I, correct me if I'm wrong, we still provide them feedback and observations, correct? So I think we are still providing them that, what, what's expected of a classified staff member, which is what that would fall under. Classified staff, if I'm not, if I'm correct, we do evaluate our classified staff, is it once a semester? I believe that's what it is, or is it once a year? Right, so for classified staff, it's a minimum, once a year, we provide them an evaluation. So in the case of a staff member who's not certified, a teacher who's not certified, what we would do is we can provide them the same evaluation that we would for a certified staff member because that meets the minimum expectations for a classified staff member.
And who does those evaluations?
Building principals. They, probably building principals do all the classified staff within their building. The ones they don't do would be supervisor positions, like for example, I provide evaluations for JR Dover. He's our ML coordinator teacher for the district. I also service, well, was Rick Stilson as a special ed coordinator. Now it's, I also do Lori Crawford as a, our transportation director. And then Dr. Glaze, obviously with our office staff, he evaluates our office staff as classified positions there.
And related to those classifications, are there different job descriptions for the different classifications?
Not that I am aware of. Like for example, when we post it for like a job posting, those, those, that same description is used for all certified teaching positions. As far as like, you're speaking specifically of an adjunct teacher, for example.
I'm speaking as an RN.
As an RN.
As an RN, okay. I functioned with a license. And so other people call themselves nurses.
Yeah, so that would not, that is not one that we would fall under. No, that does not fall under the teacher evaluation, that would fall under our classified staff, so. Yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
And all classified staff.
Specifically talking about nurses, I'm talking about our teachers.
Yes.
Even like aides and.
Yes.
Like officer matics gets, is he a classified staff?
Not exactly, we don't do an evaluation for officer matics, but for our aides, yes, they have, like we mentioned before, they have an end of year evaluation with our billing principals.
You're saying something that would be unlicensed, like she was talking about teaching a class would only be, if I would.
Would only be required to, but as, as I said, we, we handle that the same as a, yeah. Because like I said, that's a minimum level of evaluation that we need to give. If we have an adjunct teacher who's not a certified position, we would still evaluate them following this plan.
And are they paid at the same level as someone who's certified?
For those, we can pay, for example, adjunct teachers, there is no stipulation on pay for them. We have a lot of flexibility in what we can do with an adjunct teacher pay. Because they're not part of the bargaining unit, they negotiate outside the bargaining unit. Any other questions for the appraisal plan? Thank you very much.
Next, we had our department reports that were in, in your packet. We had, Scott, did you want to touch on, I mean, you've covered a lot of that in the.
Yeah, as far as my, my, my board report, a lot of that. No, I, I appreciate the opportunity, but I, I, I believe we've, we've covered most of that. Like I said, if there is anything within that report, particularly around the data, you know me, you know, I'd love to talk about it. So again, if you're interested, yay, if not, that's okay.
All right, move on. And then anything for Adams' report or Stevens? All right, very good. With that, we move on to our financial report. Brooke, Lori's yours.
Okay, thank you. We ended July in the education fund with $1,131,289.34. Operations fund, $1,225,957.97, 96 cents. Debt service, $1,058,836.99. The rainy day fund, $2,3833.41. Operations expenses totaled in the $577,000 range, however, as I noted, $213,000 of that was for a down payment for the pool Dektron unit and that will be restored once we receive the geo bond sale proceeds in October. Interest came in at $19,346.11. And education fund revenues were $974,750 with expenses of $749,464.
Any questions for Brooke? Okay. Moving on to old business, we have the second reading for the special legislative update for 2025 of the CCHA Board Policy Administrative Guidelines and Forms. As you recall from the last meeting, these were changes to policies we've already approved, but when legislation went into effect in July, we had to modify a few things. So we've approved these once, there's been some, you know, jenga with some words and things like that and moved around. But at the end of the day, we've got a second reading, so I would be looking for a motion and a second to approve the, the special legislative update, board policies, guidelines and forms.
I have a quick thing to say about a couple of them. Is it okay to say it now or wait until after you approve them?
Go for it.
Okay.
Why not?
So on the notice of executive session, I was curious why we need number 14, Board of Aviation Commissioners?
Which one is that?
Number 14.
14, we argue.
Oh, oh, what number is?
Yeah.
It's the very last one.
Oh.
Very last one, but it's the very first one in our Google Doc.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I was looking at this one. So update notice of executive session form, and you said, remind me again, what does that say? I don't have that off the.
It said on, for number 14, it was something to the effect of needing a Board of Aviation Commissioners.
Beats me. I apologize, I don't, I don't, that's. I, I will, I will just say, these were, these were vetted by our, our legal counsel and they said, everything in here is in here for a reason. Just because I don't know what that is, doesn't mean that it's not important, is the only thing I would say. Like I just said, I don't know.
There was something about the commissioners that was not. I, I, I'll look for it too, because I.
I also found in the student suicide prevention policy, we've still got places that say in parentheses, describe where we have, they don't actually state what our policy is.
Thank you, yes, we will need to make sure we update that one then.
Under the Board Authority and Philosophy, it still says Board of Trustees and I thought that we had agreed that we're the school board and not the Board of Trustees.
Which number was that one?
Under Board Authority and Philosophy.
Board Authority, there it is, gotcha, yep.
And then the last one I had was under the audio, video and digital recording in section four, paragraph three. It was talking about how no one's allowed to record or take photographs without the express permission of the superintendent. And I was curious how we handle that when we have like award ceremonies and things of that nature. I just thought that was a little excessive. So I just wanted to kind of look at that one too. But I figure most parents don't write to Dr. Glaze.
I, I haven't heard him receive any of those.
We had a form at the hospital that we signed, that everyone signed at the beginning, giving permission that you could be photographed or videoed. So is that part of what the kids sign?
I think it's saying that like parents can't take a picture or record something at school, not that the kids can't be photographed. We do sign, we do sign that.
Okay.
This is more like if you're going into a meeting with a teacher or the principal and, you know, the, the parent wants to video record, it's currently the way, this is where, if I'm not mistaken, is that our policy is that that is not permitted without the explicit permission of the superintendent.
Right.
Correct? And so you would like to revisit that language?
Because it, it talks about anywhere on school ground.
Right. That just kind of seems a bit excessive, correct? Yeah. All right. We have a committee that, our next committee meeting is actually, I believe, the 19th, it's next week, it's a week from today, actually. What we can do is we can vote on the ones that were not mentioned here or the, yeah, exactly. So the ones that are mentioned that Beth brings up, that would require a board movement to strike those from this particular vote and then we would vote on the ones that are remaining, if you guys want to do that. If you're fine with how it is, then you guys can move forward with your vote on this policy as is. But that is, that is a you guys' decision on that.
I would like to move to strike the three that have been mentioned by Beth and vote on the remaining. Bring those back.
Let's have a motion and a second to approve upon second reading minus the three referenced. I believe one of them was the B100, C425 and then G350.
And then you also mentioned the update notice of executive session form, Beth? Yeah, that's the fourth one.
And the updated notice of executive session form. So we would be looking at removing those four from, from approval. So I have a motion and a second to approve minus those four. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they carry, the motion carries minus the, the four that are still in flight. On new business, we have the resolution allowing an additional appropriation from the rainy day fund. There is a request for up to $500,000 from the rainy day fund. We are requesting that appropriation to cover expenses related to the re-roofing project that's been going on until the bonds are sold. Upon closing of the bonds, the appropriated funds up to $500,000 would be returned to the rainy day fund. And I'm asking for a motion and a second to approve a resolution allowing that additional appropriation from the rainy day fund.
I move to approve an additional appropriation up to $500,000 from the rainy day fund. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions or comments? Right, all those in favor of approving the resolution allowing the additional appropriation of up to $500,000 from the rainy day fund, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. All right, next on our agenda is the approval of the 2025, 26 certified appraisal plan. Annually, the Board of School Trustees must approve a certified appraisal plan. The appraisal plan meets all the criteria outlined in the Indiana Code 20-28-11.54. There are no changes in the plan from the 2024 plan, except for the addition of the smart goal pilots. So I'd be looking for a motion and a second to approve the certified appraisal plan for 2025 and 26.
I move to approve the 25, 26 certified appraisal plan.
All right, I have a motion and a second for approval of the certified appraisal plan. Any questions? All those in favor of approval of the 25, 26 appraisal plan, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the plan is approved. Other matters to come before the board. Advisory committees, September 15th is the professional learning experiences. The schedule of events is, we're already talking about September. So September 1st is Labor Day, no school. September 4th through 6th is our attendance black hole with the Tipton Ford Festival. September 9th, we will meet again in, in these chambers for our monthly board meeting with an executive, executive session to follow. And then of course, as mentioned, the September 15th professional learning experiences. And then finally, extracurricular accounts, the schedule of balances. In your packet, we have the report from all of the extracurricular accounts by school. And basically that is just a, I think, a, a statute that states we have to have a copy of the report filed by and kept with the records to, to talk about what our balances are at the end of every month and the end of every year for those extracurricular accounts. So this is basically a FYI, but we do have to approve that we've looked. So I'd be looking for a motion and a second to approve the schedule of balances related to the extracurricular accounts.
I move to, sorry, I took my. I move to approve the extracurricular accounts in regards to schedule balances. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the extracurricular account schedule of balances. Are there any questions or comments on that? Good, all right, all those in favor of approving the schedule of balances, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, the extracurricular account schedule of balances.
Real quick, going backwards, do you have who's, we changed the names of the committees.
Oh, gosh.
Who's on this committee?
You're on them all, Eric.
I am, okay.
I, 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 I can, I can send out a reminder after this, I, I can't remember what time I had it. I, I remember Beth is on it because you were the one who showed up last.
Changed the names of the committees.
Yes.
Put him on the Underwood Committee. Very good. With that, we're at the end of our agenda, so I'd be looking for a motion and a second for adjournment.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I had a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.